Just pray. You have the Father with you, thank you for this another beautiful day of life you've given us. Thank you for all your blessings upon each and every one of us. We pray for the ones who are sick, Father, the ones who have the virus, and we just hold them up to you, asking that your will be done, be with the sick and bereaved. We have so many in our community. We thank you for all the blessings, at least things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 16th, 2020 Winfield City Council meeting. We've got the city attorneys on Zoom here on the computer and as well as Tim Garrison, Councilmember Garrison. I'm not sure where Anthony's at. Anthony should be here in a minute. Because of the COVID issues that we still have in rising numbers and different things, we may go back to according how things progress or not. There's been a lot of studying going on as to whether or not the social distancing in the group gatherings needs to be looked at and evaluated again, so we may go back to where we have to go back to Zoom meetings we've had the last, what did the last two months for protection and different things for everybody. But that's still to be determined, but I always rather have a whole meeting like this as I had on Zoom because they just want us to kind of do what we have to do for it, bill paying and some of that stuff. We don't really get to discuss a lot of things that we want to discuss to do in the city. That being said, we still need to be safe though and look out for one another, but we need to try to be aware of what's going on around us. The first item on the agenda is approve the minutes from the June 2nd, 2020 council meeting. If nobody's got any question or comments on how the minutes are written, I need to ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor? Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 1261, CDVG application about appointing an engineer. We've got that resolution over there. Every time we do a apply and do a CDVG grant, we have to appoint a engineering firm to handle the process for us, seeing that the job is carried out to the specifications outlaid in the CDVG grant and the process. This is this particular CDVG grant that we're facing to enter into or try to apply for, so to speak, to try to get our funding to help cover the cost of what it's going to cost to fix Wrigley Street up here going into Shadowwood Apartments. I would like for the council to approve my recommendation that we appoint Porter Hickenbottom, engineering out of Fayette, to handle that engineering part of that for us.
Has he ever done any for us before?
He's done some, no, he hasn't done any engineering work per se for under a grand or anything for us, but he's, I've had him look at a few things, you know, for me, for being under contract with us, to best of my knowledge. I don't know that I've had him.
Does he charge the same percentage?
Oh yes, it's all in that, it's a big figure of what the state, but I'd like to, which we've got Goodwin Cable Mills on the other project on those CDVG grants that's going on with the 129 and that kind of, I guess, kind of spread the business out, so to speak.
Does the state pay whoever does it the same anyway, right?
Yeah, pays the same. So I'd like to, if I could, ask the council to pass this Resolution 1261, authorizing them to handle engineering for this particular CDVG grant.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? We got, I don't think we've got anything in here on this, on our, we've got a public hearing coming up on this, don't we? On this particular project, or do we have one coming?
Not yet.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 972, qualification fees. Everybody's familiar with this, I guess, being in the position that you're in. We have to set an ordinance ordained by the city of Winfield for qualification fee and the amount of $50 is hereby fixed and imposed upon all candidates seeking an election as mayor of the city of Winfield, Alabama, except for, except as here and after provided for section two qualification fee and the amount of $25 hereby fixed and imposed upon all candidates seeking election, council member of the city of Winfield, Alabama, except as here and after provided for section three, such qualification fee shall be paid to the city clerk and deposited to the general fund of the city at the time of taking out qualification papers by such any candidates. Section four is any person desiring to qualify who is not financially able to pay the required fee may, may, fee, many qualified, provided such prospective candidate furnishes the clerk with an affidavit stating that he is financially unable to pay the fee required, fixed by this ordinance. Section five, this ordinance is adopted pursuant to section 11-46-2 of the State of Alabama Code, 1975, and shall be in effect in all elections, both general and special, for four set offices from and after the date of adoption. That's the, we have to adopt this ordinance, number 972, for setting the fees. That's pretty much the standard fee that's been, those amounts has been pretty much standard, unless the council has any reason to change it. I need to ask to approve this ordinance, the amount for mayor's fee, $50, and the council $25 for qualifications for running for those positions.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Huh?
Minutes.
That was, you got the third resolution?
Time.
Okay.
It's on that one.
All right, no. Let me, I don't see, that one, that's the whole, I guess, I need to, if I can, I want to, I don't know how long, there's probably a little bit of discussion on this next resolution. I figure I want to talk, or will it be?
Is that, is this the employee paying resolution?
No, it's the.
Yes.
Oh, it is? Okay.
I don't think this one, this one won't take too long, Mayor. I don't think that.
It's been about three or four hours.
Resolution to change the handle of it here.
All right, we'll go ahead and go to, okay, I've jumped one ahead. We'll go ahead, next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 1262, pay for working holiday. I think the council's already discussed and we've already pretty much voted and approved, don't approve that. I guess this is just an action to approve the resolution.
I don't have the resolution tied.
Mayor, Mayor, this is actually, that's what I wanted to explain. This is actually a resolution to amend the employee handbook, the personnel handbook, because when we changed that, when we did that that night, when we discussed it, I thought we could just do a resolution, just resolving that, but when I went back to the office and looked, there's a provision in our existing handbook, employee handbook, that says, quote, under, under paid holidays, it says, "An employee who is required to work an official holiday shall be given compensatory time off within the next 90 days, or paid for the day at their regular rate of pay at the discretion of the department and approval of the city." That language has got to be amended in the handbook. We got to make a change to the handbook. First of all, we don't have compensatory time off anymore. We got rid of that, and that's sure to have already been taken out of the handbook then. But this is actually a motion to amend the handbook to provide for, rather than compensatory time off, that if they are required to work, they're to be paid at time and a half, at their rate plus, plus a half for that day's work. That's what the language, it will take out compensatory time off and will, will go to time and a half, is what it'll basically say.
All right, so we need to, we need to ask, we need to get the council to approve, and a motion and a second to approve this resolution amending the employee handbook.
Correct, correct. To change that language to cover this, to cover this provision.
Okay. Everybody understood and heard what he was saying?
I don't need to.
All right, I need a second based on that.
A second.
All in favor? Okay. I've got, you have to, forgive me, I've got two sets of agenda papers up here, I need to get rid of one of them.
Let me have this one. This one, let me have this one.
I'd like to, I'd like to go ahead, I'm going to move number, the number nine, number nine up to number five, and then we'll go back in order once we get that number nine out of the way, if that's okay with the council, but I do that, number nine. Next item we're going to have on agenda is Dana Harden with Quail Run subdivision. Dana, if you want to speak on behalf of the Quail Run subdivision.
I would like to request that the speed bump that was placed there in March be removed. It's at the crest of the top of the hill where you have to go around the curve, either going up or coming out of the subdivision, and we just don't feel like anyone can speed up in that area. It's a, it's a nuisance almost when you get to the top of the hill, have to stop to go around the curve, or to come around the curve. So we just didn't feel like there was a need to put a speed bump in the subdivision.
Well, you requested that, you want that speed bump removed, totally removed, or you in favor, in favor, or you would just like not see a speed bump period, or maybe removing that speed bump and replacing it somewhere else?
I mean, as far as, the only other option that you would have to put a speed bump would be after you get almost down past the bottom of the hill to get enough, enough, or worse than enough, speed to go up, because when you're coming up into Quail Run to turn that curve, you have to almost slow down unless you're a NASCAR driver, and I guess you could do that, but coming back down the curve, if you're coming down toward the bottom of the hill, there's huge culverts on each side of the driveway where it's placed, so if you run off in somebody's yard, or whatever the issue was, you would be on top of that culvert, you would have to have somebody come get you out. I don't think you could just run through a yard and continue to keep going. I mean, I've been there for 15 years, and I've never met anybody in that curve flying that fast.
When they brought, I wasn't here when this, when they brought, asked for that speed, did he have a list of names?
No, just one person.
Just one person.
Have you, you speaking kind of high from the whole community that's up there?
I contacted several, they just couldn't come today, so I'm just at short notice, so.
Have you seen, have you, did you find anybody that was in favor of this, of the speed bump?
Of the speed bump, no, because there's not even, I mean, most of the children are either grown children or small children that would be driving, so I don't feel like adults are going to be flying up in there at 50, 60 miles an hour, taking that curve. You just can't take it that fast. I mean, there's, you know, the speed limit's posted at the bottom, it's 20, and it's where you get to the top of the second driveway on the left, there's a speed bump, so you have to almost stop to even cross over the top of it. There's no way, you can get to about 20 going up there, but then you got to stop to make that curve. On this side of the curve is a culvert, and on this side is two huge culverts where the water runs off the road, so I don't feel like you can around that curve that quick to need a speed bump there.
I'd like somebody to get, sits us up there, ask them what they're going to take there.
Comes back, bring it back before it comes. You got any questions?
Has he talked to the cabinet? Has he talked to the person?
I don't know if he probably, you probably haven't talked to the person.
No, I do not do, but I can get a sense that everybody up there, if you want, petition sign.
Tim, you got any comment or question for Dana? Can he, he's got, can he hear me?
Tim?
Can you sleep?
He's done or something.
Can't hear you.
There he is.
I have one.
Say it again, Tim. Asking if you can hear me. Let's see, we got, I'd have to count again, trying to think how many residents is up there, you know, off the top of your head, how many residents up there?
Probably 20, 20, 20 down, maybe, that 20 or 20.
I was thinking 20, about 20.
And most of them are up and around the, around that curve. It's on the three aisles, a lot of speed bumps.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Is everybody okay with what Jimmy recommended, Jimmy?
Can't hear you.
Yeah.
I can't hear what you're saying, I'm going to put you on speaker.
Yeah, I agree with Jimmy. I was having trouble here, I couldn't hear Randy, I couldn't hear.
Look, now, hang up.
All right, now, can you hear?
Can you hear us now, Tim?
I, I hear you well, it's, sometimes I couldn't hear Randy, it sounded muffled, but I could hear Anna a little bit talking about a speed bump.
Yeah, she, she lives in Quail Run subdivision, and she spoke to several other people that's residents up there, and they've got a problem with that speed burker that's been put in and been installed up there, where mainly, which where it is installed is, is the main complaint, but they don't really feel like that there's a good place to put a speed bump or burker up there, and they were asking for that speed burker to be removed.
But who, what, someone from that subdivision that wanted it in there?
Yeah, there's one individual lived up there. What Jimmy has recommended is that they get a list of the ones that disapprove of it being there, and then bring that list back to the council.
I think they could visit everyone in there if you disapprove, I like Jimmy's saying.
Okay. You think you could do that?
Rob, was that, excuse me, was that what those speed bump bumps that we put on?
No.
No, this is one with money, not asphalt. Okay.
If you, you think you can do that and then bring it before the council, next council meeting? All right, we'll, we'll table it till the end, we'll come back and we'll see if we can come to a satisfying agreement, maybe, or something. All right, now, I need to go back. Next item on the agenda is a resolution for 551 Meadowwood Avenue. Can we do, we can, have you got a copy of the agenda with you, Todd?
Yes, I do.
You see, you've got five and six there.
Yes, sir.
Can we act on both of those at the same time?
Yes, we can act on both of those at the same time, because they're in the same subject pattern, just two different properties, and I believe Sandy has, has the information to show you and provide the council on each of the properties, but now, when we act, we need to, she can do that, but, but Anna, but when we act, we need to act on two separate resolutions, one for each property.
Okay, resolution, first, we're going to put these together, Sandy, when you do a, when you go through your description and explanation of what's going on here, but we've got a resolution for 551 Meadowwood Avenue and a resolution for 264 Honey Suckle Drive. We'll act on, we'll act on these, we'll discuss these together, but when we act on them, we're going to ask, ask for the council to approve a separate resolution for each one of them. You want to bring us up to speed a little bit, Sandy, about these two?
Okay. First, we'll go with the 264 Honey Suckle Drive. Brett's going to show you a few pictures of some of the floor.
Can you turn that, we'll, Tim, can save that?
Turn to you, where they.
While he's getting, while Brett's getting the pictures pulled up, I'll wait until you, as far as, as far back as what it, you know, I've been, in August of 2017, we started getting community action complaints made on the house at 264 Honey Suckle. The house had burned years prior, and now the yard was overgrown as well. After researching who owned the house and the land, I had contacted a lady, and she had stated, well, I contacted Marty Ballard, she stated that Wayne owned it. He never changed the deed over into the name, over into his name, and she had prepared to take a work on two separate occasions for him to take the courthouse, and of course, he never did. So no action was taken at that time until the deed got swapped over into his name. So in January of 2019 is when the deed finally got reported in Wayne's name. So in 2019, it's the April of 2019, we started getting more complaints that were made that this was unsafe and then slightly in the area of the subdivision, concerns that were vagrants were staying in the house, either the door being open, or there was no door on the house. I don't think we could actually tell. Then I think it was in May, it was May 9th, we had a council meeting. There was a property owner that had showed up at the council meeting that lives in the subdivision, he came forth and asked the city to take action now that the correct property owner was listed on the deed. So the mayor and council asked for the letter to be sent to the owner regarding the cleanup within 30 days, and after the 30 days, the city would make forward. Also, the mayor had suggested that the city make the abatement board more active to help with these type problems, and to combine the litter, weed, and junk board with the housing abatement board. Okay, so on May 13th, 2019, I prepared a notice of the weed, litter, and junk control violation letter and mailed it to Wayne, but I actually could never get a correct address, so after contacting family members of Wayne, he came to the city hall. So on May 15th, 2019, he was served a notice by one of our officers and was required to sign that he received it and understood the notice. I think it was May 21st, which was just a few days later, 2019, the neighbor stated that Wayne had made an attempt to clean the yard up, I know, and, but he had also piled up a lot of wood inside of a boat in the garage. So 2019, let's say June 2019, to move forward, the ordinance number 831, named the litter, weed, and junk control, I think we had decided then that it would need to be updated with more specific procedures for each complaint, including like the housing abatement. Then in August, while the ordinance was being prepared, the housing abatement, litter, weed, and junk control boards were combined together as one, and new members were established. In December of 2019, ordinance number 971, entitled Abatement of Nuisances, was established and recorded. This ordinance will, it provides the abatement of nuisances in the form of unsafe structures and, and operable vehicles, weeds, and it amended the ordinance 831, which was the weed, litter, and junk ordinance. Beginning 2020, the board members were given the new ordinance to review for the upcoming meetings to discuss guidelines and procedures of the abatement. And then, of course, we know what happened after that, we got into this pandemic, and of course, everything got kind of stopped. So during the time that this has all been going on, we've had more complaints about 264 Honey Suckle, and then we had some new complaints about a place, it's a house over at 551 Meadowwood. This house actually was just a new build, and I don't think anybody had actually ever lived in it. 911 had never even gave it an address in 2012, because they still had it listed as under construction, but we did get an address, she listed it as 551 Meadowwood. So on May the 28th of this year, we sent out letters to the owner, a letter for each property, and it stated, you know, the violation and how many days he had, and of course, then the signs were posted also on May 28th, and the signs both stating, "Due to noncompliance, this dwelling will be removed" June 15th of 2020. We also, on May the 29th, we had both, both of the letters that were sent certified, we also had them hand delivered to the owner by one of our officers. And then I think on June the 4th, Brett has some more pictures that, these pictures were asked to be taken outside, maybe inside of those places, just to actually show y'all how both of these places look. And once we posted the, the notice, the signs, and sent the notices out, we actually have around these two letters in the journal record. I think it was the June 3rd and the June 10th, probably. And this one's at the Honey Suckle Drive. We didn't actually assess it, but we did go in and just do some photos. And Brett, can you tell them when you get to that Meadowwood house?
This is the back of the structure. This was just to the side, coming into the 78. This is what, you see here's the backyard. This is the back of the house. The back door is up, right here to the right, the opening there, and it's also open in the carport.
This new ordinance that Todd had fixed up that was supposed to amend this other litter, weed, and junk ordinance, we've got a list of procedures that, you know, we're, we're kind of checking off, so I guess my question to Todd is, you know, now that we've got the letters sent, and we're to this point to where, you know, it's demolition time, do we need to go ahead and, and do the notice for the bids?
That question was to you, Todd.
I couldn't hear you, I'm trying to, somebody to rename that, or she can come closer to hear.
Do you want to come closer?
No.
So her question is, because we sent the notices and posted in the paper, is it time for us to bid out for destruction? So, her question is, because we've sent the notices and posted in the paper, is it time for us to bid out for destruction of the house?
I don't know what time you sign on. I don't even need it.
Okay. Can you still hear me? So, her question is, is it time to bid out for the destruction of the house? The notices are ran.
What, okay. Here's, here's what, I, I'm not, I'm, it's still kinda garbled, but I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer what, what I think we're talking about. The council tonight, what, what, what we're doing tonight is the council is receiving a report from the appropriate city official, that being Sandy and Brett, advising them of the conditions at these properties. The council tonight needs to determine whether, in its opinion, the conditions of those properties are such that they're unsafe, they're unsightly, they, they cause damage to other properties in that, in those neighborhoods to the extent that they've become a nuisance, a public nuisance. And, and if they determine that from, from being unsafe, uh, structures being unstr- unsafe conditions, uh, the structure itself doesn't have to be unsafe. If the condition that it creates is unsafe, uh, such that it creates a public nuisance, the, the council needs to so determine and adopt a resolution declaring that property, uh, the structure on top of that property or the condition of that property to be a public nuisance. If that resolution, if the council agrees and passes that resolution and takes that determination, then the council will provide notice to that property owner that he's got to remedy that condition by demolishing the building within a reasonable time. But that reasonable time can't be less than thirty days. You gotta give him at least thirty days to remedy that situation. And within that time, the city's gotta place a sign, I know we've already put a sign, but we gotta put a sign within fifteen feet of the entrance to the building stating that it's been declared a public nuisance. And that if he does not take care of it, the city will demolish it at the end of that period of time. And that says that this is, the, the first step in the process is the finding by the city that it is in fact unsafe through the passing of a resolution. That's what needs, if that's what the city wants to do, that's what the city needs to add now tonight as step one. Does that kinda answer the question, Sandy?
It does.
Okay. Now, now we've already placed a sign, we've already given notice, but that was just to see if we couldn't get this done. Now, we gotta, we gotta adopt a res, if, if that's what we're going to do, we gotta adopt a resolution. That's step one of the process of the demolishing process is, is the, is the passing of a resolution.
Well, I think we need to go ahead and declare him and give him thirty days to tear him down, or we will tear him down. Since it's the same order of both properties.
Is that what the thirty days is for, to tear him down? Or what, what is the thirty days for?
What Todd just said, you've got to give him at least thirty days.
Yes. You don't, you, you, you don't have to give him thirty. You can give him forty-five. You can give him fifty.
No, we've given three years already.
Yeah. What I'm asking is, I mean, they can't just, whoever these owners are, I mean, can't just go there and do a little patchwork in that building.
No.
No, cause, cause it, well, well, Tim, it depends. That, the answer to that question is it depends. It depends on what's in your resolution. If your resolution is, if the structure in its present condition is unsafe and must be demolished, if that's the finding of the city, that's the only thing you can do. If in your resolution you say, you've got to, it's unsafe like it exists. You've got to board it up, you've got to cut this, you've got to do that, then you've got to do that. But if you say that it's unsafe such that in its condition and it's gotta be demolished to make the nuisance, then that's what he's gotta do. Okay?
Okay. I'll just make sure we had our, I know you did, our terminology right.
Yeah, our, 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 our resolution that we adopt tonight will determine what he has to do. It's not just, we gonna say it's a public nuisance and he goes out there. We're gonna say it's a public nuisance and it, and it must be demolished within a certain period of time, or we will do it ourselves. That's the only, only avenue he's got is to do what we said in our resolution. That's why all this information had to be presented this way tonight.
Okay, that, that answered my question.
Brett has some new pictures of both properties out of today that he took and looks like.
This is gonna be new pictures today, yeah.
He moved at both places, but, um, he's got it.
Chris, you got?
Sir, you won't speak?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanna add to what we're discussing. Obviously, uh, there's a couple here from that subdivision that it's well documented where I stand on the issue. Obviously, I guess most people know it's a family member of mine. Uh, only thing I'd like to add to that, Todd, uh, I know the mayor has stated, you know, in meetings past that we have twenty-five or twenty-eight houses in that situation. I would like to add, have them brought on this festival resolution the next time. And I wanna move forward with these two as well as the other twenty-five or twenty-seven in this, in the city that we have the same issue with. Is that something that we could do?
Yes. I know that we've got this, uh, uh, ordinance in place. Yes, and Chris, now I want everyone to understand that within that thirty days, he has a right to give the, the owners, or for anybody who has an owner, ownership interest in those properties, has a right to claim, uh, to request a hearing before the council. And if the council determines at that hearing, yeah, you're right, we'll let you do this. We'll let you fix it that way, then you can. If the council says no, we want you to do it the other way, then he's got a right to appeal. And if he disagrees, if the owner or some, the owner disagrees with the decision of the city and they, and they, and they follow the process and do the right steps, we could end up in the circuit court of Van County. Or actually, if, if one of these properties, the circuit court in Van County, arguing over whether this is a public nuisance. Okay? That, this, it gives them that right. They have that right as long as they exercise their options appropriately and, and timely. You know, we're putting a timeline on it, but the law gives him, gives, gives the owner the option to go back and say, okay, I will come, I will come before the council within that thirty days, I will be heard.
Yeah, I understand that. I, 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 I just, I understand that. But with these two here, I'm ready to move forward with them as I've stated in here over these last three years. But on top of that, I wanna add the other twenty-five or twenty-seven that we've all talked about, that we have in the city, problems with those properties as well, a resolution for those.
Yeah, we just need to do the same, Chris, we just need to do the same thing for those. We've done tonight. We need to have that presentation for, for the council. Uh, so we need each council meeting. If we've got twenty, twenty-five properties out there, let's decide, you know, we're gonna try to present two or three each meeting. Just boom, 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 until we dress all of them.
Sure.
But there'll be a resolution per.
Could we not do a resolution, Todd, with all of the rest of them at one time?
Each one of them gonna be different. Uh, let me add a little bit to what Chris was talking about there. I think what the, the main, the main issue is now, is tonight on these two particular resolutions for the two different addresses, one in Meadowwood and one in Quarter States on those two addresses, is because the, you know, there's, there's, there's probably a lot of ordinances. People don't even realize that there's ordinances. There's a lot of things in the city laws that, that we've got that people didn't even realize that it, that it is a law, same way as in the state and the federal. You, a lot of times you don't know that it's an ordinance or it's a, a law in place until you're faced with it. Uh, the biggest issue, I think, wh- why we're, where we're at on these two houses is because numerous, numerous, numerous for the last three years, co- community action forms filled out because of these two particular project, pro, these two, two particular residents. It's been numerous times and it's numerous times and we've contacted and we've, we've tried, we've tried our best to work with the landowner to try to do, get it to where it's satisfactory to the neighborhood that's around it. Now, all these others that I'm talking about that we do have, the twenty-five or the twenty-eight that I, that I have mentioned, to, there's not really been community action forms and complaints filled out on all those particular places. If they had been, we would be addressing them the same way. We're not just kinda picking and choosing, but we've got what I would call heat. There's been so much heat on these two particular places because they are in a secluded area of town in each, in each section. And there's a lot of people that lives in those neighborhoods that drive by these particular ones three and four times a day in and out. And it's, and it's, it, the, the, the issue is, is, has really pushed them to keep filing complaints and filing complaints in, within the neighborhood. Now, that being said, what, on the twenty-five or the twenty-eight other houses that would, you know, I'm not saying that there may be one or two of them that has been a complaint over the past time in it. And I, I don't want everybody to get, get wrong and, and then we start getting the market flooded because we set a precedence. Well, we've, they've complained and they've got that thing taken care of. Now, we need to start complaining and we wanna do the same thing with this house here, here, here. Uh, I mean, we'll have to address it if we get complaints because that's what we're doing now with this one, with these two. We've kept getting complaints. But there's some structures, a lot of times there's structures in town in different areas that's involved in estate settlements. Though the estate, you, you know, everybody knows what and how an estate can go. You got one, the, the primary owner has passed away and then the estate gets it. And then the people that's within that estate don't always agree with each other about who's supposed to do what, who's responsible for what. And I'm not paying for it because it's not mine. I'm not doing this because it's not gonna be mine in the end, you know? A lot of times you get a lot of that kinda stuff. But now, we've got some other places that's had complaints on it and they've, and, and some of the states has come in and done some work to kinda up, to, to, to get it a little more presentable, not, but not the best. I think by us doing, putting that abatement board in place and get, getting it back active, that, that is one way to be proactive is to try to combat these when these complaints come in through that abatement board. Uh, and some of these structures, some people can't afford probably to do something with some of them. And that's when I have been weighing back and forth, cause we got so many projects that we wanna do and we don't have the money to do it. So, I've been battling back and forth, where do we use this CDVG grant money for? Or we use it for, you know, a road, a cupboard stuff to be fixed here? Or there's, there's CDVG money for demolition of these houses that we've done. The city of Winfield, prior to my administration, has done, done it two different times. And I think, uh, each time there's more than ten houses. And I think the last time might've been close to sixteen or eighteen houses. I, I can't remember, sixteen. They're different kinda buildings and different things, but, you know, I think that's where we're at is, is, we know there's issues there, but we just haven't had as much complaint on all the other areas as we have these two particular ones. And it, and that's why it's this, that, that, I'm not saying that those others shouldn't, they will be addressed, you know? But that's where we're at on these is because we've tried numerous times to get something done about these. If that helps, you know, a little bit on the explanation part of that. Uh, but, uh, but, but, but since she's explained where we're at on both residents, we've gotta act on the resolution on, on each one. And Todd says, has said in this resolution that we're fixing to put in place for each resident, we got a resolution next here and then a resolution next there for this one, whatever. The, the resolution can state different things. It don't have to be the same resolution for each one. You might find that one dwelling is not as bad as the other dwelling and you're going, you're, you may spell out in that resolution, this is what it's gonna take to satisfy this council based on this way this ordinance reads. Where this is gonna take, it's gonna take a complete demolition here to do away with this residence totally because we don't see how you can make it fit in the amount of time that it needs to be done in. Or on the other hand, on this one here, where we can see that you might can get that to where it wouldn't be, have to be as, as, as a total, um, demolition as the other project. I just want you to, as a council, I want y'all to understand that those stipulations on each one that you can spell out in each resolution. That's correct, is it not, Todd?
Yes. Yes. And, and, and just, quite simple, based on my understanding of, of the condition of these two premises, that, that the resolution or what we're, what, what we're asking or what's being asked tonight is a resolution determining that it is, that that structure is, is so unsafe that it's the only way to evade the public nuisance is to demolish the structure. That's, I think that's what's being looked at tonight.
So, if, I mean, if y'all got any discussion about what you wanna do in this resolution or you don't?
My personal opinion, I think that the house has been burnt, which there's some more that's been burnt. That's not only that they need to be demolished, tore down.
And he's not done yet.
Well, if they come back and, and they say that, that house needs to be livable, it needs to have power turned on to it, it needs to have water, and it needs to have a working unit, and you need to walk in it and turn the lights on. If he can't do that, then he's got so long it needs to be. It don't need to be halfway built and then set there for five more years. It need, if the power company, y'all will not hook power to a house unless it's safe and finished. If the power company will not hook power to it, then I think they got so many, so long to get it done, whatever we decide. And then it needs to be, if they're not gonna do that, it needs to be tore down. Because in my personal opinion, it's not right for somebody in the, especially in the subdivision, to work hard and have what they got and keep their place looking good. And then across the road, there's nobody living in there. And then when they get ready to sell their house or there's houses around, then it hurts them because somebody just don't care. And when you come to this town to look for a house, what's the first thing you say when you do? I understand exactly where they're coming from. When you turn and go into Quarter Estates and you go around through there and you see that, you gonna say, well, I don't care nothing about living here. I mean, and if we want our town to be beautiful, then we need to step forward and do something. That's my personal opinion.
I'm making a, if it's time for a motion, I make a motion, we go ahead and, and we send him a letter, give him thirty days. Cause he's had three years and he hasn't done it. But that since we're gonna have to do it separate, I make a motion for the Honeysuckle Drive.
I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second to how, uh, how, the dwelling on, in honeys, on Quarter States at Honeysuckle Drive, uh, uh, address two sixty-four Honeysuckle Drive. Uh, the way I understand it, the council is in agreement that that house needs to be totally removed. Is that, is that correct? And I got a motion and a second. I need to ask for all in favor to pass that resolution next. Uh, Todd, need you to prepare that resolution, uh, explaining to, um, Angie, well, probably Sandy and Angie, the next step for that, for is that resolution will, when you, uh, write this resolution up, I'm sure we'll vote to pass it, but we have agreed on this resolution tonight, the council has. Do what?
If we pass the, we, we pass the resolution tonight, I just, the only thing we've gotta do now is, is put the resolution in print form, have it signed, and then the, the thirty days will start upon the notice, which is mailed out with the resolution. So, I'll give the resolution to Angie and, and Sandy the next day or so. Uh, they'll mail the notice as required and that starts in thirty days.
Okay, so it should be our second meeting, uh, our second meeting in July, should, we should, uh, if nothing's happened, uh, by the first meeting in July, you say it'd be okay to put that out for bid? That way we'll have our bids in by the next meeting in Ju-
Well, the problem, the problem with that, Mayor, is, is if you give him thirty days and you put it out for bid, I understand the bids say, you know, we can reject all bids, but if you put it out for bids before the thirty days, Ron, it's, uh, you won't know what's going on. You won't know whether they're gonna be able to tear it down or not. I mean, you know, you can just, you can remedy it in the end by the time the bid, oh, but then you don't have to award a bid.
No. I see your point, but do you see my point?
I do. Okay. That's what I'm saying. If, if, if we don't have to- If we if we word it such that we don't have to award any of the bids, we don't have to. You know, we can reject all bids because, uh, it 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 could be a moot point if the time filled for the bids. It could have already been remedied itself.
Okay.
The letter that's sent out is, is that gonna be a certified letter? Second, needs to be sent out, sign it.
It's a certified letter sent out, uh, to the notice to the owner based on the tax assessment.
Okay.
He's been hanging there.
We actually, they both, we certified in our sort of.
To make sure that they did eat it.
Would you explain that page for this? So the public can know. Who paid for the, this job being done if it, if he don't comply and then when.
The city has to pay for it and we have to re- try to recoup our money from that landowner. Uh, well, we okay, the, um, next resolution is gonna be, oh, for a resolution, uh. Next, uh, five fifty-one Meadowwood Avenue.
So make the motion for that one.
Uh, now, you want that resolution to read the same as the one before, a total removal?
Yeah, it's both the same owner anyway.
Is it, you got, you on there Tim? He lost his voice again.
He's talking, but I can't hear you.
Can you mic it, Jimmy?
Sir.
You mic it, you mic it, Jimmy.
Yeah, can you hear me now Tim?
Trying to plug it up, my battery went down.
Okay, uh. Uh, R- uh, Councilman Barnes has said that he wants to, the next resolution for the one in Meadowwood Avenue to read the same as the resolution in Honeysuckle. Uh, on Honeysuckle Drive. Are you, you, you have any, uh, comments or discussion about how you want that resolution to read for, uh, Meadowwood?
It should read the same way then, correct?
Yeah.
If you, if you, if you think it needs to be totally removed.
My opinion, I agree, I say it needs to be read the same way as everybody else felt.
Yeah, yeah.
Is he, are these letters gonna be hand delivered?
Yes, sir.
The one on five fifty-one, it could be repaired, probably.
Finished.
Finished, but again, he's had three years to do so. So, you know, again, it'll need to be, it needs to be resolved, so. I think he has, in my opinion, he has, you know, we could ask him one more time. If y'all choose not to, that's fine, I'd go with.
When he gets this letter, that's that's asking that, that is his next time. I mean, that's just. And he's, he can, he can come before, have a hearing and come before the council itself during that thirty days is what Todd said. If you, everybody, everybody agrees that's how that resolution needs to read?
If you want to, then we will take it down as well.
Uh, I've got a motion from Jimmy to for to read the same way, or a motion from Rusty and I need to ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
And Mayor, I'd like to add to it again, like I said, I would like, you know, uh, I would like to see, you know, the list of other twenty-five. I noticed three, this gentleman and the other twenty-five and then. Councilman Hallmark said, you know, we can start the process with those as well.
Yeah, I hope, I was hoping that this, um. Virus is going to get out of the way, we're, cause, uh, but we, we, I think they had a meeting scheduled, uh, real. You know, and then this hit and then we couldn't have their board meeting and it's just, just.
Were you in favor?
It's kind of messed the stuff, but yeah, I I agree, we we're gonna get on it.
I do have a request though, that if anybody has any of these properties that they wanna do any complaints about, they really need to come up here and. Fill out the complaint form so I can actually have it on file.
Yeah, I like, I, that's, you know, that's, that's a key thing is having it.
Well, can I say, can I say something about that? I've had, I've had a lot of people call me and complain, but they don't want, they don't wanna do it, they stepped forward.
I mean, they're not, they're not gonna be able.
I know, I understand that, but that's what I tried to explain to them about, but.
The complaints are only for us to have for our file.
Right.
You know, kind of like, uh, the houses that we're talking about now. You know, I've got probably, uh. Maybe fifteen right here that are, they're gonna stay with this file, you know, unless I have to.
But but what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is if they don't want to, then then I guess it's our job. Our job.
I agree.
You know, if they don't want, it's it's that's part of, it's our job.
Well, then you can come make a complaint on paper, bring that picture of the house.
I do, I do. I mean, that's, I'll do it.
All right, we ready to go on to the next item on the agenda. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, the city, the, I'm gonna say city, it's not on here, but city cemetery mount. We've got, uh, speaker here gonna bring you up to speed a little bit, what we're looking at up here at the. Uh, on, uh, cemetery mapping. Of course, you know, y'all voted, I think, that. We've done, took on some more property up there, but they've had it, they haven't, they've. They've got several different, which I let her explain, but they've got several different maps and different things and they want to kind of clean that up a little bit. I think I got, uh, clean that issue up up there.
We had a meeting Tuesday on June the sixteenth and. Angie had kind of come up to some of this over to me to help try to get a better mapping system for the city cemetery. And, um, this is, well, that's one of the original maps, which you try to locate. And Rob, when he's called out to help, he stands there, um.
Maybe three hours or so.
Trying to find it. And when she handed it to me, and this one is still actually only original over paper. And they're all square, they're not actually planted square, if you wanna call it that. So it kind of makes it hard when somebody's looking for a file and Tommy's had some as well. Of trying to figure out where someone's buried. And then, um, and then Rob can just come look at them. And then this is the master list. And when I got to looking even where my folks are buried, I can't tell heads nor tails. Which was which, which direction goes and I probably knows it better than anybody else, the cemetery itself. But we are proposing to have, um. Heath Reed has came in and gave us an estimate on what he thinks it would cost to do a survey. A GPS location of all existing graves and plots. Um, put placement of rebar so that it can be found. And, um, he says he can do that within six months or close to six months. Um, it is very expensive, but as a city to find it and not spend time after time after time trying to find it. Then we would know and if somebody needs it, then they can can get it. Um, the cemetery committee does have money in their account. But if we use that for our monuments and grass cuttings like we have been doing, it runs about nine thousand dollars a year. So with what we have in there, if we take on the total cost ourselves, we'll deplete that in a couple of years or so. So we're asking the city to help us with the, excuse me, help us with this so that we can actually. Have a great map that everybody in generations to come will still be able to tell what it is. Um, Angie sat in on the meeting, I'm not sure if I've got the one or anything.
That's, um, he mentioned that he might bill us quarterly, has he done them? He could try to do it in sections where it wouldn't be so, uh, such a. Cost all at one time. It is his part-time job, so he would be doing that on the side. Um, and we're not in a hurry for it, it's just we need one desperately. Because that's what we have to look at when we're trying to.
This is what you got to go by.
That's the best maps we have, cause those are the newer maps.
And he said he would also get us one for the wall, so that you would have one for the wall.
Well, that's an awful lot of money and it's not gonna correct anything that's already that's been done. So.
We're not looking to correct anything, we're making sure we, we don't make any mistakes further.
Don't tell me, the mayor tells me, let me finish.
Go ahead.
Why could we not just do the ones that have, that are left?
Well, that's what we proposed to him, but he said, in all reality, it's easier to do it all at one time than it would do in sections.
Sure, it is for eighteen thousand five hundred.
And there's something about, those maps are square, I'm not an engineer, those maps are square. And there's something about the boundaries of the entire. Rob, you're on the cemetery board, you sit down on that same meeting, would you like to comment? There's something about the boundaries, he said, was was important, to start with correct boundaries.
He would come in and map it all out, all the outside boundaries and make sure that all the property is as it says, but some of these. Are getting to the point where they're being placed crooked in there and this is all square. And that's not how all the plots are laid out. And with the monuments and so forth over the years, it's kind of gotten misplaced, I guess you could call it, not placed as correctly.
It's kind of, I had, I don't sit on the cemetery board, uh, but I can see the frustration that they have with it. Which Todd might can elaborate a little bit on it. I don't know what kind of liability the city's in if we, as a city. As a city and we own a city cemetery and we sell plots for burial, uh, spots for people. If we sell a spot that's not, it's kind of like selling a piece of property. I know the spots are a lot smaller, but if you compare it to buying a acre of land. And if we sell an acre of land that's not actually where we say it is. And it imposes on a piece of property or a piece of land that's already been purchased by somebody else from the same entity from the city. Uh, let's narrow it down to plots, you know, smaller than an acre. Now, are there some kind of liability for us, uh, if we're, if we mess up and sell a, uh, spot. For somebody for a burial spot and it's not where we told them it was?
Well, the, the short answer to that is yes. We, we just recently had a situation where. And and Jimmy, certainly I understand, I understand your point, I understand what you're saying. The only problem with that is that. All of those plots that are marked on those maps. There are not bodies buried there.
There are not what?
Not, not bodies buried.
What we had the other day was we had a situation where. Because somebody didn't measure properly or because it wasn't marked properly. Uh, we got in the middle of a, of a, of a big uproar, uh, because somebody encroached. And we were actually part of the problem, we created the problem, cause we went up there and actually looked at it. And we thought it was okay and then we go back and do the markings, we find out there's an encroachment. So part of the problem with the maps that we have is we've just got these things marked off, there's not always a body buried right there. There are some vacant lots and and if you're trying to measure out from over here to there, and we're saying, well, this, this shows to be a vacant lot. And it's not, it's not marked properly, it creates a lot of problem.
I understand.
That's, that's, that's where the concern is, Jimmy. That's where the concern is. And Cindy, am I right about that one? I mean, is that one of the things that you think? I guess is there are some vacancies, I mean, there's names on them, they, they appear to be sold. But there are not bodies physically buried there and there, there are places that somebody's gonna be buried in the future. And we need to make sure we got everybody in the right place and we sell one next to it or with, and 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 something else that we need to try to control, Mayor. Is that we've got, we've got people who have deeds or who have agreements. And and they may sell their lot to somebody else and then that person comes and says, I bought it from so and so, put my name on the, on the map now. And we weren't even part of that. And so we really need to, beyond what you're talking about, we really need to see about publicizing some way. That don't buy these cemetery lots privately between people. If y'all are gonna do that, please both parties come to the city and 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 talk to or come to the cemetery board or meet with the representative and say. This is what we're doing, we're just checking the plots, so that we know what's happening.
Well, I think you ought to be able to draw, we ought to have it drawed up, I mean, it's, it, even though we sell these place, these burial spots. It's still a city cemetery and we're still paying to, the city cemetery board is still paying to keep those spots up. I mean, is there not some kind of, uh, way you could, that when we sell a spot that it's, uh. It's still kind of somewhat in the control of the city, I mean, that it can't, if it was to be sold, it has to come back and go through that same process with the city?
That, it it should, if we can, the only problem is people don't. They don't, and and we need to, we need to make sure that we require them to do that and and. I've had, I've had people come down here and say, hey, Todd, I want you to prepare this deed with this right of return, you know. That I buy these plots, I said, no, you need to go up there to the city and talk to them. And so that's, that's what I'm talking about, publicizing that, we need to let people know. You don't need to be buying and selling plots up there unless they're going through the city. And if you do own, if you claim you own a lot up there, you need to come down and make sure that 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 we know about and it's registered with us. We've got information about it, that's, that's part of the problem too, Mayor.
Yeah, and I mean, we got, we gotta keep in mind too, cause I, I, e- even, even if I'm getting paid to do something, if I'm getting paid to do something. And it's a, it's, it's, it's an aggravation to do it. I might say, well, I don't wanna do it no more. I don't, I don't need the money that bad, I may not wanna do it no more. The problem we got, I don't know which one, which per- particular person's in charge of, 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 of selling me a burial spot up there. But I don't know that anybody on that board is making anything to, 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 I don't know if anybody gets paid for their time on the cemetery board. Does anybody get paid for their time on cemetery?
And that's.
Why would anybody wanna deal with something that they don't know nothing about because it's not, it's not, it's not in clear, black and white? I wouldn't want no part of it. I have enough trouble when I've got a surveyor showing me where the pins are and putting a stake there. With people still saying, no, granddaddy said it was right here and that's where it's at. I mean, we got, we need something, it needs to be more organized up there because I feel the frustration. I mean, I, I, I'm not on that board and I feel it.
No.
Well, that is what Heath addressed, he said that the GPS markings, everybody would have a spot and to get that, to that point. He's gonna have to physically go out there and there's like four to five thousand graves out there.
And and he said once he starts out, and he says it's in this proposal, he'll have names on the layout of all the graves. And as we need to update, and it's like Todd said, if we can get the word out to people as they're selling up there. As we, you know, maybe quarterly or whatever, we can update, he'll update that and send us a new map.
When you, uh, who, they come here to buy the plots?
They come here, they actually purchase them from me, yes.
All right, you need to put, have Todd put some wording in there and if you sell this, you have got to come back through the city.
Mm-hmm, and we, we could do that. And Rob's had the frustration of trying to. Put the, Heath mentioned row markers and and Rob had a long conversation with him about that because I haven't been up there trying to mark out. And and Rob said it, if you don't have anybody buried in that section and it's a long way to the next, you know.
Has, has, has anybody, is there anybody here not ever been to Arlington Cemetery?
I have.
You've seen it. I mean, I guarantee you there's no question we're watch what in that place and that's the way this cemetery would be up here. I mean, there's no question, I mean, it's, it's amazing how many, how many acres is over that thing and how everything is just, I mean, there's no question. And that's the way it would be up here. I think, Mike, was you want to say something? He, Mike, you serve on that cemetery board or you kind of get thrown on you because you're in the position?
I'm not on the board, I have no, um, vote or anything such as that. Um, but I have tried to help with the cemetery over the last few years as I can. The issue that we run into, and I don't know, maybe the, the survey would maybe correct, but. In the older portions of the cemetery. And including the McDonald portion of the cemetery. We don't have records of when these plots were bought. Or many times sold to someone else. With, the city doesn't have records. And so it's the, the individual that maybe bought them forty years ago and they've passed down through a generation. Sometimes they don't have records. So I'm not sure on the survey. How you would correct to know for sure who owns what, cause the city has no records. In the newer parts, and the newer meaning behind the scoreboard. Cause the city has no records. In the newer parts, and the newer meaning behind the scoreboard at the football field. And across from the elementary school, those have been surveyed. And I think, um, Goodwood Mills Kaywood did those. And those are laid out very well. But that's the newer parts. And we have records that Angie has like a book for the new parts.
We have ledger books. The newer parts definitely not, yeah, not the issue.
Is, is the older part that we don't have records from when the plots were sold? And unless the individual does, cause maybe granddaddy bought it years ago and current family doesn't have it. It's a matter of how many plots did you buy? Where do they start? Where do they end?
So, are you saying, uh, last question, she's on the board, but are you saying by, if you, if the cemetery board, for whatever reason. Ends up and we do this survey or whatever, you're going to have a better record keeping system of what's, who's got what and who paid for what. And, 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 and can keep up with it better. Um, is the, is the, is the cemetery board, is the cemetery board where maybe they could pay for half this?
I believe so.
I think so.
Well, what, what do you, like you say, like Mike saying, some people's handing down, handing down. They think I've no proof that they bought it. What do you, if they come up here and tell them?
I think it will be like a deed, you know?
Yeah, but if they don't have that.
We have no claim to the McDonald section anyway. That, that's still with the McDonald family. However, it's going to be included in our new mapping system, just as the plots. Uh, he can take the maps that we have and, and get the names that are listed on there. That big piece of poster board is, is our only record of some of the older sections. And he'll have to do the same with those.
That's the maps we're looking with, trying to locate the road in the plot with the number. And then go back to the ledger book to find out. But it's, you can't even tell which road's which, um.
And, and these are the ones that, that Rob was mentioning.
Some of the markers are, are gone that, to where you can't find where the drugs are.
Yeah.
Is the problem with the new parts.
These are the best maps we have. There is some still available in those even older sections.
That's what you got now. Hold on, what you got now is a map or you got a poster paper there that you write a name on that somebody bought that lot?
We don't sell in the, in the really old section, which is on the upper half of the cemetery. It's on the slope behind the gold. That we do sell. And it's on, some of it's on that poster board. And you, it's like Cindy's doing there. You kind of have to piece it together.
I'm in agreement with everybody here that needs to be updated. For me, I think obviously, uh, just from listening to the folks at the table, you know, the money is an issue. Uh, I would like to say is get a couple more beds just to say where we're at as far as pricing, if they're all, they're all in the neighborhood. You know, higher levels, whatever, just kind of give us an idea of where we're at on the pricing of it.
Well, I'll tell you what he did say. He said that his cost is going to cost us about a hundred dollars an hour. And most firms will start at about two fifty an hour. We can verify that. But if that baby case that he would be.
I have no doubt, but I just wanted for everyone else to say.
But you said the cemetery board can pay, probably pay for half of it and he asked the two.
Tam is the question.
Go ahead, Tam.
Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
My only concern is, it says placement of rebar. Where is this re, is this rebar going to be? I mean, for safety reasons, where is this at all over position? Is this well?
It'll have a cap on the end, so it shouldn't.
And it should be level, ground level, I would think, or.
It'll have, it'll have to be, it'll have to be below the grass where they cut it.
No, it'd be glass caps.
For safety, you wouldn't want some, I mean, just stick it up and somebody, then wouldn't want somebody tripping and falling on it. I, I didn't know where this is located and would be located.
Yeah, it'd be flush with the ground.
And he did mention us getting the markers in and having like row markers so you could say I'm in row fifteen, plot forty-five. I mean, you know.
Yeah, it's kind of like a football stadium. You don't know if it count from top or the bottom, do you? You understand that and it's aggravating somebody's.
It is very aggravating.
I've seen some of them have like PVC with it stamped in like row four, they say four and then.
He does have the capabilities of giving it to Rob on his phone so that if Rob's out in the middle, he can look and tell it right there, so.
Uh, if you can do, if, I mean, if the council's okay with, uh, doing what Chris asked, if they get some more pricing. To kind of see how that is. But we, we all in agreement that something needs to be done to correct the problem. You okay with that, Tam?
Yes.
If you, if you do that, get some, I, uh, try to get some pricing, um, of what it would cost to do kind of the same thing that he's doing.
Okay, okay.
If you can have that for the next council meeting, that'd be good.
Okay, I'll get them.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, uh, I appreciate you, uh, Cindy. I appreciate you willing to serve on that board, on the cemetery board and deal with that frustration.
Talking about that, I don't know the guy that's doing the move, but he's doing a really good job.
Yeah, they, they bragged on him last year and they didn't really have no problem, uh, voting him back on.
I've never seen it.
Uh, the next item on the agenda, uh, is, is an open line of credit, uh, credit line for Aldoc project on the industrial road expansion. That's that, uh, let me explain to you what this is. And I kind of went over this just a little bit before in the, in the last sermon that we had. The, uh, CDBG grant, we awarded that grant to do these projects. Okay, when we put it out, when we put out the bid and then they accept the bid, the lowest bid, we accept it and then we, the people goes to work. They, they get draws during their time of, of the process and the, the stages, different stages that they go through. They ask for draws, just like contractors do when they build a house. They want to get a draw where they pay their, uh, bills for their, their labor or whatever. And pay their rock bills in this situation, different things. There're going to be draws that comes in off this grant. We've been awarded this grant money. But it's our responsibility when that draw comes in is to pay those, pay those people for that draw that they're asking for. And then we turn around and send that same request to Montgomery for us to be reimbursed. Okay, as I have said before, the general fund's always kind of, down here instead of up here. We, we have to have a, a little bit of help to be able to pay these draws when they come because we don't have it in the general fund. And that's what this open line of credit's for, is for this particular project. To where we can write a check, pay the people when they request it, and then we submit it to Montgomery. They send us back. And then we put that money back in that, on that line of credit to cover that check. I just need to ask the council to, which they've, they've already started, uh, up there on this project. So, it's going to be just a matter of a few weeks that they're going to be ready to start because they're on a timeline with it. They've got so many days to finish it. And they'll, they'll finish it during that time because I think it's, I think it was thirteen hundred dollars a day for every day that it went over. Was it on there? Oh, it's eighteen hundred dollars a day. So, they're going to finish it. I mean, they're getting it in, but I need to ask the council to approve this open line of credit for this Aldoc project. Up here on the Tiffin Road Expansion into Industrial Park.
How many, how much we gave?
Uh, the, the grant, the total, the total, uh, grant amount.
It was four hundred and something.
Four hundred and ninety-three thousand.
Yeah, but we won't need that much for that line of credit.
We won't.
It was an estimated bar payout, so you can average when, yeah.
Now, probably, you know, between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand at the most, it should be, you know, that way we, because it takes probably thirty, forty-five days sometimes to get that money back.
You just going, you going to bid or just go to one of them?
Probably just go to the bank. I don't know. We need to, we'd have to bid it. Do we, we wouldn't have to bid that open line of credit, would we, Todd?
Technically, we don't have to. We just, well, you know, we just.
Just do it as a courtesy.
Yeah, we just, we could just get, uh, rate quotes and just add them up. We don't have to get it out and just go with the best rate.
Okay. We can do that. The, the council will give me the okay for me and Angie to check for that and go with the lowest rate.
Just go with, just go with the best rate, yeah.
Uh, if the council's okay with that, I need to ask for motion to approve this open line of credit to do this project. All in favor? Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is old business. Uh, has any of you got any old business?
What, what about our, our property owner on the Dana, up on Dana State?
Who was it?
What about the one guy that's getting some of the property?
We, I would kind of, I've had Heath doing some surveying. I'm working with a, a, a company that's, uh, needing X amount of property. And, and some of this, that we've agreed to let, it's kind of, the reason it's been on hold just a little bit, we've let, allowed. Some of the dirt to be removed from that, our part of the property to go toward this, uh, road project. And some of the dirt that's got to come out of that, that has to be replaced. We allowed it to go back on this other property. It's kind of, we're kind of, I'm kind of waiting till that kind of, we get all that situated before. Uh, we're going, we, I hope that we end up with a pad ready spot on, on the, up above Tiffin on the north side. That, that's where we add on.
So, there ain't been no, nothing?
No, we ain't swapped nothing yet. But we're fixing to have to, we're fixing to have to get on it, Tam. We're going to have to get with them because of our permit that we've got with the state. We're going to have to act on that permit.
That's what I was wondering about. Are they not, what name do you venture, why you don't leave?
Right. That's the permit I'm talking about coming off the right of.
That's a different, is that what we're waiting on, the permit?
No, we got it. We already got it. It's good for a year. We got, we applied for it actually. We actually applied for that permit before this actually even started.
This right here is the extension. This is the extension road. That other, that other road will be going into the other property.
Right, yeah. This, this don't have nothing to do with that.
I, I just wanted to make sure I understood. Rob, you get the bid to do the other one too?
Uh, he got, Robson got the bid to do this Tiffy project.
All right, what about off the highway?
Well, we're, that's, that's being included in this other, that we're working with this other land on.
Okay.
What is this?
That's what I, that's.
Yeah, I had a, I got a copy of it. Oh, no, it's on.
I thought though, we was going to have to get the state's approval to whoever started it in there off the highway.
We do. We, we, the state told us what, how it's got to be done and that's where they'll have to go. They gave, it's, it's an engineered.
Robson will do it too.
No, no, it'd be that, it'd be the other. We hadn't, we hadn't bid it. It's included in a project that we're working with the other land on. Yeah, one we've been talking with. He's, that's.
The landlord pays, the landlord.
Yeah, he's got to pay. You got to get it to where we got to have it. Uh, you know, let me just.
Just, uh, I was reading the other day, uh.
Got what now?
Twenty twenty census, uh, I, I think they said there was about fifty percent of the country who is not, uh, fill that out. I would just remind everyone to send out.
Has a, has a census people started knocking on doors?
I think that starts in.
It hasn't started yet, has it? Okay. If you, I mean, a lot of people, I, I think this sense, well, I know this census this time is a lot, it's a lot more simplified. I, I need to, everybody encourage their neighbor to fill that thing out. A lot of people thinks it's, but I'm telling you. If, if, it, it helps, if, if we lose a congressional seat, it's going to cost us big time. As far as getting representation when we need it in, in Washington. Everybody needs to fill that census that we need to know. We need our population to be what it is. I'm not asking for it to be higher than what it's really is. I just want people to fill out where they'll know exactly who, how many people live in this city, in this county. But we need to encourage people to fill out that census. It's, it's very important. I mean, I've been on the backside of filling a thing out, you know? But it, we need to fill it out after being here. I can see the importance in Washington.
As I say, Mayor, Marion County was around forty-seven, forty-eight percent. So, it's right there with the national.
You know, and you kind of can tell how census is going to be usually because when, in an election cycle. It's always less than fifty percent of the people go vote that actually live in that. You know, you don't ever get forty-seven hundred to forty-eight hundred people to go vote. I mean, it, it's usually that same way on filling out stuff for the government. But we need to encourage people to try to fill that out. Uh, if, if nobody else got anything, Jim, you didn't have nothing else, did you? Uh, I've been requested by Mr. Honsworth down here at Winfield Rubber about releasing the, 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 the other part of that CD. That he had put up on that note. Uh, they've got their, their, their show's running wide open again. They've got everything running wide open for three M. And the different ones, they've got a big contract with three M, uh, because of this, this, which everybody knows how the stock market, what the stock market and different things has done. And it's kind of, uh, pen, it's kind of put, penalized him from being able to do what he needed to do with the, the CD that he's got. Uh, he just asked if the council would reconsider releasing the remaining portion of that CD.
I'm not for it. I, like, like I said before, we're, we'll, I'm for releasing what it, down to what he owes. But not releasing the whole thing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I agree with that, you know? Hold the map that is still owed, but he can have what's left.
Tam, Tam, you got a comment? He's muted again.
I mean, he, he knows that. No, he, he does that.
I know.
I, I agree, I agree with Jimmy.
Okay. Okay. All right. And the other item that I've got, two other items right here that I need to, this has come up on us here that Brett has been talking, has talked with me. We've got, we've got a, uh, uh. We've got a officer that's fixing to leave us, uh, resignation letter here from, uh. An officer that's been with us. How long's he been here with, how long's he been with us, Brett? About three years with Roger Marshon. He's leaving, uh, he's turned in his resignation letter here. If you want me to read all this or I'll pass it around and let you read it. Long story, short, Brett is needing to post that position and go ahead and put an officer back in that position. I need to ask, uh, for, for the council to approve us letting him post that position.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? Okay, uh.
Who made the second?
Uh, he wants to let you know it's been an honor to serve here and he's gained experience and knowledge to be with him for the rest of his life. Uh, he don't think he could gain what he gained from any other agency. The Winfield community's accepted him. Uh, he's always going to be grateful, uh, for the opportunity to serve here. Uh, he has another family business that's really needing more, more of his time due, due to the complications with the COVID nineteen. He needs, uh, he just wants to say that he can't thank us enough for letting him work here. Uh, I mean, best, my knowledge, he's a top notch officer.
Yeah, I believe him. He, he did request to, uh, work part-time if we could use it. And I thought he absolutely leaving in good standing.
Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is, as, as, uh, Rob has come to me about a opportunity that's come about here. He's got a lawnmower that's about five years old, right at five years old. Uh, he's wanting to ask that we surplus that lawnmower. Uh, Span Hardware has got it to where he can buy a, uh, new lawnmower on state bid, on the state bid price. Uh, he's, he's asked if we let him surplus that lawnmower and purchase a new one. Rob, you want to speak anything on this?
Well, uh, it's like a thirteen thousand dollar mower that I could get for ninety-nine hundred dollars. It's on state bid, crying. I thought, I think right now would be a good time. Sell this other mower while it's been pretty bare shamed. Kind of upgrade a little bit. And, uh. Got some money that I'll put towards that.
Yeah, Rob's got some discretionary money that he can use toward the purchase of it. Uh, that would, it's going to leave the city with a very minimum amount that, that we'd have to pay. Um, if, I'd just like to ask to, I've always kind of tried to help the department for what they need. And Rob's does a good job. His guys, he's got, he's got a new guy back, that, that, that one new guy, a guy come back that was with us. Uh.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, Jimmy made a motion to get a sucker to, all in favor. On, on that said, I, I mean, I always blow, but, uh, Rob sometimes, I mean, uh, which I know everybody does. Everybody, everybody recognizes Ricky. Everybody sees what Ricky does. But I'm a little concerned a lot of times about Ricky. Uh, Ricky, he bad, he's, he parked on this side of the road and he'll be working on this side of the road. And he's bad to stand in the middle of the road. People, I mean, I, it worries me to death because people not paying attention. Uh, if we can get a flashing light put on his back or something and a horn or something, I mean, Ricky's everywhere. I mean, Ricky's all over the place. If I see that truck, I'm, I'll start right then looking for where Ricky's at. Cause I mean, he's not with that truck a lot of times. Sometimes he's standing beside and it's right on the side of the road. But try to keep the guys looking out for him, make sure this, this heat that he stays, you know, hydrated. Sometimes he's standing beside and it's right on the side of the road, but try to keep the guys looking out for him, make sure this, this heat, that he stays, you know, hydrated. Cause I'm, I know he don't know when to stop. But he does-
I've seen that truck parked, give me half a mile down the road.
Yeah, but try to keep an eye on him for it.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, uh, uh-
All the wrong guys do a good job to-
They do, they do.
Looking good. I called and asked him about something today and he, he jumped right on.
Oh.
That was, we got back, that employee got back, it's really good.
Yeah, he's a good gentleman.
Yeah. Uh, I've got to, uh, I'd like for, kinda old business a little bit, there's another thing that I wanted just to, uh, which y'all know, everybody heard my field last week on paving roads. And I think maybe everybody might have a copy of this in there, I don't know if everybody's got a copy, or if I'm on with got a copy, this is another, uh- This is another request and protest for the city about getting a particular road paved. They've had all the people that's in that area wanting the road fixed. Uh, we have already did one road in that little small subdivision and the other road, I didn't think, compared to all the other places that we got, but doesn't need as much attention that that, and I still don't. I mean, I, I, I still say that every road, and I think y'all agree, that every street's on the list. I mean, it's on the list, but we gotta categorize it and what money we got to use, when we can use it to try to do it. That being said, I mean, I feel like that we have, we budgeted money to use for paving. Uh, I think that if the council's okay with it, I would like to, I want y'all to, you know, I gave you the list, wanted you to kinda look through it, but I, there's, there's, there's three or four roads that I, I went, uh, I do it, I did it on, again, Sunday, went through to verify my thoughts on the really rough places and the rough areas. And I, I received another bid and I've asked for, I've, I've, I've got two bids and I'm asking for one more bid. This is a, this is a, this is a bid to try to fix that drainage issue that we've got on, uh, Berry Road. Uh, it's not put out for bid at a certain time, I'm just trying to get three competitive bids where I can bring it back to y'all and kinda tell you what we're looking at to try to fix that. And I feel like we need to fix the drainage problem in anywhere before we go put an asphalt on it, cause I don't wanna come back and then have to redo it. Uh, but, uh, Regent, are y'all familiar with Regent and Rose, is it Rose, Rosewood, Rose, what's, uh, Rosewood and Regent?
Where is that at?
If you go down Oak, if you go across, turn that crossroads, if you turn down in front of crossroads on Oak, uh, is that Oak Drive?
Red Oak.
Red Oak Drive. Uh, Regent or Regent turns off Red Oak to the right. And it goes around, comes back out over here on Metal Arc. And then Rosewood turns and comes down to Regent, that little strip right through there. Uh, that, that, those two streets, I want you kinda, well, if you look at, if I can get the council maybe to look at that, and I'm gonna try to get prices on what it costs to fix that. Airhead Village, in Airhead, they, they, the whole subdivision, no doubt, needs, needs attention. But we got drainage issues that I want to still, which, which we still, it's always about money, you know, we don't have the money to actually do what we love to do. Hire engineers, come in and say, draw us up to where we can have this flood, this water out of here and, and the best way to do it and, 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 and try to do that. FEMA, we're working with, with FEMA, which we've got a, a conference call Monday morning at ten, or Thursday morning at ten-thirty with the FEMA rep, that there's some money out there to help. That I'm, we're, we're trying to reach, we're trying to get them to help us, but it had to be issues that occurred during these, these, from February to, February to first night. Yeah, it's just like a thirty-day period, you got, we gotta say that we had issues during that time. And Rob's has replaced coves, he's done work over there on Regal, he's done work on Regal, he's done work on Berry, and he's done work on Posey Lane during that time. He can be reimbursed for that, but we're try, I'm trying to get him to help us with these other areas that we've got real bad, uh, that during that time happened. Uh, we've got issues with part with trees down in the, in the canal down there that actually happened during that because it's washing the bank out and the trees has failed. Uh, but we have to try to get engineers to draw us up something, which, this conference call that we got Thursday will help on that. Uh, but that, if, I, I want you to consider those two streets, look at them, tell me what your thoughts are. And I want, in the, when you go into Airhead and you turn left, the first road to the left that goes down into that cul-de-sac where that tree is, I want you to look and see what your thoughts are because we don't have water issues and a drainage issue there that we might can get that street out of the way and have that part done, so when we do the, get, get, get drainage issues corrected and fixed over there where it comes down off the Cherokee down to where Tracy lives, where the water goes under. Uh, still want the engineer to kinda look at that and give me some ideas on how we need to fix that. But I want you to look at that first street to the left and what I think needs to happen is that pine tree needs to come down and, and fix a, a cul-de-sac right there. Uh, cause there again, when people come to looking at houses, that it is an issue, which, and we've got realtors in here and I know that people worry about, wanna know why the roads are shaped and it. But I think we've done real good with, with trying to, trying to get things done to help in that issue. If I can get y'all to look at those three streets, but I would really, 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 really think that you need to go out here on, um, um, uh, Fong Grove, Fong Grove and Ridgeway. And I, I, I would really like for you to tell me what y'all's thoughts are, what we need to do, I want, I want your thoughts on what we need to do with Fong Grove and Ridgeway.
Where is it?
That, uh, Ridgeway goes, it turns, Ridgeway comes off of, uh, Highland, Highland comes in behind B and B. Ridgeway turns to the left and it goes in front of, uh, by Chuck Teles and in front of, uh, that's Ridgeway. Fong Grove turns and goes to Tiffin, goes down through that way. A, a lot of that traffic, that Brett got to count on Highland, that traffic count was eight hundred cars weekly, or what was that amount of count, you remember? It was a very high count of how much traffic and that traffic's coming out of there, going that way to keep them coming down through here to go this way. Uh, but, uh, you might want to take your doom buggy when you go over on either one of those roads. Uh, but, uh, well, it's, uh, it's, they're both of them bad, but I, I'd like for y'all to look at them two roads and look at them two that I'm talking about up here and see if you see any others that may be, that y'all think are worse. But I, to me, those are the worst five roads that I just named, those are the, some of the worst five, other than Clay Street. One side of Clay's, but I, I, I'm not gonna throw it on the county, and the county hasn't thrown it on me, but one side of it's not in the city limits and one side of it's in the city limits. And I've been working with the, Tim asked the commissioner, we've been back and forth on the proper way to try to handle that, we've not forgot about it. But we have, Rob has put a lot of plant mix out there.
Where's Clay?
Uh, off one seventy-three. If you go up fourteen, turn right on one seventy-three, it's down to the hill.
Beasley, Cross and bump Beasley, John Beasley.
You'll go out, so Anita's hair salon out there, two more, if you, it, you know, that, that road's definitely, I don't know that it's as high a traffic road as the others that I've named, but, uh, the mail carrier is having real issues over here on these two streets that I named to you over here. But those, I, I, I think those are the top five in the worship shape. You know, if we could look at it, maybe, give me y'all's thoughts and maybe let me put it out for bid and see what, what we can get bid, maybe try to get those roads fixed. Uh, I think that, I think that's, you know, I, we still got an issue down here on Midway, but I hoping, I'm hoping I can get some work help from FEMA on Midway down here with this coves. Uh, trying to go out of sight.
But we're losing Cherokee, you know, right there Cherokee with forty-seven, we're losing it, that hole.
Where at now?
When you turn on forty-seven, then come up there and turn on Cherokee.
Yeah, uh, I, I get calls on that, which Rob and them, Rob and Tim both, that we've hauled several loads of rock in there to try to get that right now, the rain has stopped. But that, that water comes up in the middle of that road. Uh, and I think we really need to look at that issue for is getting that water to where to run, wait, instead of coming up in the middle of the road where to run out to one side or the other before we asphalt that. But we got a little rough spot in there now where they've put rock and, and, uh, plant, uh, not, a rock and crush the ruin in there to try to solve that hole problem. But we might need to try to grade it somehow, get a little, to get a little smoother, but to get us through the, but I think when the winter comes back, we gotta make sure that water don't come back. But if I can get y'all to look at them, maybe when, we, see what we can do for the next council meeting as far as that goes, uh-
I heard the car count, you was asking about that a while ago.
Yeah.
About eighteen hundred cars.
Eighteen hundred a week.
On Highland Road.
On Highland. And what that is, that's traffic that's bypassing this downtown area. And I, I don't wanna, I don't, I don't, I mean, I, I always don't like cut-throughs, but if you think about that much traffic, more, that much more traffic through here, it might, it cause issues down through here. And, and then the train, tr, the train, they're on the south side of the tracks when they leave there already.
Yeah.
If they, if they leave there and come this way, they cross the tracks there and then they come here and then they gotta cross the tracks again, so I mean, it's not really a, a bad, bad thing.
Or the rain from my, this is me, do it, we need to look at the most populated roads.
That's what, that's what, I, I think you'll, you'll-
Like, you're basically buried in Cherokee there, or, or, we didn't take that money, you know, that's like, yeah, we did.
We'll get there, he's got on red oak right now.
It's just, it's, it's one of the, it was a huge asset, I mean, I can show you, give you the breakdown, just on Highland Road, I never would've thought there'd been that much traffic. I believe there would be.
Probably quite a few red.
Uh, if, uh, if they ain't nobody, if nobody's got nothing else, uh, I need to ask for next item on agenda, a motion to pay the bills. Second. All in favor? All right, now, let's talk about, uh, the first meeting in July. That's gonna be the, uh, it's gonna be on, I, I won't be here to Tuesday. I won't, I won't be back till the, the ninth. But if, if the council's okay with that, I mean, Pro-Town can handle that council meeting, or is there anything that's, uh, politically on the agenda? I mean, if we can either move it or let Rusty handle it.
What, what day is the fourth?
It's on Saturday.
Okay.
I didn't know if anybody else be out the week before the fourth or the week after.
Be the seventh.
You're out the seventh?
No, I said that'll be the seventh, the first meeting.
Okay, no, it'll be the second. July the second. It's the first, okay, no, I'm looking Thursday, yeah, you're right, be, uh, July the second. Yeah.
So you're asking, do we want to meet on the seventh or the ninth?
No, I won't be, I'll be gone from the second through the ninth.
Okay.
I say we just go ahead and have it the seventh, like it falls and that, unless they something.
I didn't know if any, anybody else would be out of town because it's the-
No.
Holiday weekend or not. If you wanna leave it like it is, we blow and go. If anybody sees anything come up or whatever, we can, we'll get Angie to do a, spread around on a date or whatever. Uh, if, if nobody else got nothing else, I need to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, all in favor? All right, I appreciate it all.